Good evening. I hope everyone is doing well on a blustery March day. We're happy to have all of you here. It's good to see everybody joining us this evening. We're going to begin with a discussion of the budget, talking about our utility funds. As you know, Radford has long held utilities in a way, not just for service, but it's also benefited our community in terms of the things that it could help fund. And we're going to talk about that a little bit over the course of the evening. Then we need to have a brief closed session before we move into the regular meeting at seven o'clock. So we thought we would do this utility funds budget discussion first and then go from there. So Craig, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody, and council members. I'm going to start us off this evening with relaxing. I do appreciate everyone's time this evening for another session to discuss and review Radford's finances and budget. The last couple of meetings have been focused on where the city has been financially and where it currently stands. Tonight, we're going to begin discussing where the city is going as it relates to the fiscal year 2026 budget. And I'll just preface it, that's why I've got this beautiful river scene here. Thank you, Jenny, for finding that picture. The next couple of weeks, as we discuss budget, are going to be challenging. There's no two ways around it. We'll have discussions about what's best for the city and its residents, and decisions will be made that directly affect the city's citizens, businesses, and our employees. But in talking to each one of you as elected officials and talking to employees and talking to citizens in this community, they all know it's time for us to be focused on the future and getting where we need to be. Jenny found, Jenny, Jenny did the pictures for me. I appreciate her finding these. And this one just epitomized it for me, too. There is so much. I've said this since the first meeting I was with you guys. There is so much to be proud of in this city. The discussions and decisions that we'll be making in the days ahead, again, will be challenging at times, but they're all going to be made so the city can continue to grow and thrive and that our citizens will continue to be proud of this community that we all care for and love. As we head into budget season, I wanted to remind everyone as we get started this evening, it's going to be a party. No, I'm just kidding. Budgets, like we'll be talking about tonight, like we'll be talking about next Monday, like we'll be talking about all during April, budgets are simply our best estimates of where we expect things to be based on the information that we have as a staff when we assemble the information. We'll continue to refine those budget numbers up until the council adopts the budget to ensure that we have the best estimates possible. And I just say that simply because as we go through tonight, you know, I sent the presentation out to a couple of directors today, and there were one or two questions back, and it's like, yeah, we probably need to look at that a little bit harder because I'm not, I was telling the mayor earlier today, when you, when you sit and look at a computer for about eight hours at a time, the numbers just kind of start doing this. So if, if we get into a slide tonight and you go, well, that doesn't look right. Well, hopefully I got them all. Hopefully we caught them all, but if there's something in there that you have a question about, please ask. I wanted to put this slide up just as we begin our discussion of the utility funds this evening. I just wanted to remind everyone of this information that we talked about earlier in a meeting, and it related to some of the presentations from the auditors as well. As you can see, you know, our net position from fiscal '21 to fiscal '24 has continued to decline, and we've got to, we've got to get about addressing that and doing what we can to turn that around. And I just had this slide in there. That's, that was from the previous meeting. Solid Waste Fund, Electric Fund are trending into the negative with their net positions. Water and wastewater still slightly positive, but hopefully with the things we talk about this evening, we can start getting those numbers back where they need to be as well.
With that, will you address net position versus actually being in debt?
Right.
Two million or fifty thousand, what that means?
Net position takes into account, and this is a big thing that is confusing sometimes. Net position takes into account, one of the big things, especially in utility funds, is depreciation. When you do, when you do, local governments keep their budgets on a modified accrual or what used to be called the cash basis, and so it's revenues and expenses. And you don't account for things like depreciation and amortization and some of those things, but those are real expenses that show up in the utility funds. That's what's happened to the, the electric fund in particular. I almost got kind of nerdy over the weekend, started working on another slide, and I thought, no, that's too much. You don't need all that. But, you know, some communities, and I would hope within, we, there's no way to make that happen this year, but I would hope that within a few years, especially in the utility funds, Radford needs to budget depreciation as an expense because that's what pulls that net position down. You know, I appreciate you asking that because somebody said, well, when I look at that, it doesn't look like you would have any cash. It's totally different. This is the ability to have reserves. The city has cash. The issue is in those reserve funds with depreciation and other expenses, it, it just shows the relative health, I guess is the best way to say it. You know, I, I've seen utility funds, other places that have negative net positions, but that's not where you want to be living.
Right, and I, I think that's the real key here, is none of this is where we want to be, but understanding exactly what it means and how we're addressing it is so important. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. We're going to talk about these three funds tonight, the solid waste fund, the water and wastewater fund, and the electric fund. Solid Waste Fund, it's enterprise operation of the city, provides for efficient and environmentally proper disposal of solid waste from our residential commercial, commercial and industrial customers. Department also provides opportunities for recycling and waste stream reduction. Solid Waste Fund includes several divisions, including curbside and dumpster collection. And I've, you'll notice tonight, I'm going to reference accounts instead of customers. We started trying to pin down customers versus accounts, and they're different, actually. The customers, depending on the service, don't necessarily match up to accounts. Accounts are what we bill every month, so that's the number I'm using. Four thousand ninety accounts. We have seasonal leaf collection, Christmas tree collection, spring special collections, and the drop center operation. I wanted to start off with this slide because it's one of the things that we'll be talking about tonight, and it goes back to a previous discussion. These are the rates as of this fiscal year for collection fees in the various communities. Radford's at twenty-two, Dublin's slightly higher, Christiansburg twenty-three, Pulaski, a little under thirty, Blacksburg thirty-one fifty. One of the things that I'll be proposing is the budget for fiscal year 2026 is that we increase that residential solid waste fee from twenty-two dollars a month to twenty-five dollars a month. That would generate an additional about a hundred thousand dollars in revenue if we bump that for three dollars. I also had somebody ask today, well, what if we did twenty-six? Well, if we did, you know, if you take that hundred and, the hundred and twenty thousand in additional revenue, I think I said a hundred, it'd generate a hundred and twenty thousand in additional revenue. Every dollar's about forty thousand dollars, so if you went to twenty-seven, you'd add another eighty thousand dollars. I'm also recommending increasing the city's charges for dumpster services by five percent, that the dumpster fees that the city charges, and I did not bring that schedule with me tonight, but I can certainly have that prepared. I don't, do you know the last time dumpster fees were increased? Because I couldn't find that, I couldn't find that. And so, you know, again, one of the numbers that I was going to put on a slide today to talk about, too, is inflation over the last four years in general has been about twenty-two percent. And I'm not saying all the fees have gone up twenty-two percent, but I am saying if they've not gone up for a long period of time, we're behind. And so, so that's, that's that. This is where the solid waste fund was at the end of February. Revenues over expenditures are about a hundred and seventy-nine thousand. And this is a bunch of numbers, but I'll try to get through it fairly quickly. The first line that I wanted to talk about is the personnel because, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about personnel in various divisions and what do we have. This, and this came out of the budget book, so I'm assuming it's correct. Fiscal year 2022, in solid waste, there were sixteen full-time and one part-time. That also continued into fiscal '23. In fiscal '24, the part-time position went away, and the full-time positions came down to fifteen. Then in this current fiscal year, the full-time positions went from fifteen to eleven, so there was a reduction of four in the solid waste division, but two part-times were added back, and that's what is proposed for fiscal year '26 as well, is eleven full-time, two part-time. So there have been some reductions there over the last couple of years. The first line under that, the next line is operating revenues. Operating revenues for 2025 are estimated to be about one million five hundred eighty-seven thousand four hundred and seventy-two dollars with the fee increases that we talked about earlier. Proposed for fiscal year '26 is one million seven thirty-four, which is two point seven percent over the prior year, excuse me, two point seven percent over the current year budget, twenty-five, but it's nine point two percent over the current fiscal year estimate. One of the challenges, and we'll talk about that in the other funds, too, is the, the estimates for revenues are optimistic in this fiscal year. I'm really, when we get into the general fund next week, we're really going to be talking about that because the general fund's coming up short in a number of revenue areas. This one wasn't too far off, about a hundred thousand dollars, but the budget was sixteen, million six hundred and eighty-eight thousand. It's about a hundred thousand short of that.
So, again, just with your proposal, looking at how you came up with that, you're getting the new rate times what we think will actually be the actual this year, correct?
Yes, yes.
So we're not going off of an estimate that might make that a little higher than it should be. That's very realistic based on what we're actually collecting this year.
Well, yes, sir. What we tried to do and what I did in terms of adding additional revenue is I based it on the current year estimate. What, what, what the, what we think the year's going to end.
Right, what we think we're actually going to collect.
Not on the current year budget.
Right.
But on the current year actual, so, and you'll see that in a minute. And, well, even in that one, the current year budget's one million six hundred and eighty-nine thousand. Next year's budget's a million seven thirty-four, which is twelve, forty-six thousand dollars, which doesn't sound like a lot of increase, but it's because the current year budget is too high.
Right.
I'm not going to bore you by going down through the rest of the lines. Bottom line on the expenses total, expenses are, this year are estimated at one million five hundred and fifty-eight thousand. Twenty-six budget is estimated at a million six hundred and ninety-five thousand, so that's an increase. We've got a, got an increase in disposal and recycling. We've got an increase in other operating expenses, which we think, Callista and I talked about that today. We've had some vacancies in that department, and we think we've finally got all the positions filled, so that makes that number higher than this year's actual because there'll be a full year of salaries. It shows, and when I show the net, that is the expected gain of revenues over expenses of thirty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars. That, that is conservative. I'm hopeful that the, me and my budgeting practice, and Callista and I have talked about this, is I always try to be conservative with the revenues and a little bit liberal with the expenses, so when you get to the end of the day.
Comes out positive.
It should, yes, sir.
Can you explain P I L T? Because I know people probably ask about that.
Yeah, thank you. That's, thank you very much. P I L T is payment in lieu of taxes. When you have utility systems, they have assets that if it was a private entity, that private entity would be generating some tax revenue for the city, but since it's a municipal enterprise, it's non-taxable. But one way to generate revenues that can be transferred to the general fund to help offset things is what's called payment in lieu of taxes, and that, that amount has not changed in a while. And that may be something before budget's complete, we may try to take another look. The, the challenge, if you increase that, of course, then your, your net will go down. But, and maybe that's something that we work towards to start calculating in the new fiscal year to update going forward, but.
Well, and I think that's a discussion we need to have because one of the challenges with the general fund that we'll talk about once we get there is where do we find all this revenue to help us take care of the additional pieces of the RAN and to get us in a little more better structural situation? If for five or six years or seven years, the payment in lieu of taxes has been the same, maybe it makes sense for it to be a little higher. I don't know. That's a discussion we all have to have to see if that gets us closer to that structural piece that we need to be at.
I'm going to move to one more slide, and then we can stop and, and talk about that as well. This is a different way of looking at the solid waste fund. This is just the proposal for fiscal '26. You can see the, the budget balances at a million seven hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. That includes an increase in the reserves of thirty-eight nine, and then there's the various revenues and expenses. So just a synopsis on the, on the solid waste fund. The proposal is to increase the services from twenty-two dollars to twenty-five dollars and increase the dumpster services fees by five percent. We will go back and continue to look at those operating expenses to see if there's opportunities to trim. Disposal and recycling includes what the city pays to New River Resource Authority for the disposal. They had an increase, and I'm thinking that increase was about thirty-two thousand dollars. I can't remember right off the top of my head, but there was a slight increase for the disposal. And then our recycling has been very healthy as well. One thing this does not include is any alteration to hours at the drop site. That's something that, as we get into that discussion, you may want to consider. As I've shared with several of you, the, the, the challenge with calculating savings at the drop site, and I think, I'm not going to spread out all the papers tonight. I think the drop site costs us on average about seventy to seventy-five thousand dollars a year over the last five years, but most of that is hauling to, for the recycling and the, and the solid waste that's picked up at the site. So even if you completely close the drop site, a good portion of that is still going to wind up in the city's collections, either at the rec center or at the library. You would, you would save some labor costs, assuming that you trim back the labor to reflect that. But I did not include anything related to the drop site in this proposal. I know that as we get into more discussion in the days ahead, that might be something you ask for more detail on.
Can we talk recycling for just a minute? Because I had some folks ask me about that. There's always this misperception that recycling actually makes us money. I know at one time, you could take cans to a recycle center and get, come away with cash and things like that. That's not the way the process typically works for the locality. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Craig, as part of our, and Seth, you may know as the alternate for New River Resource Authority, as part of our deal with New River Resource Authority and with the state law, we have to have a certain percentage of recycling. Whether you think it's the right thing to do or, or not, you know, that's really not, neither here nor there. And I think it's around thirty percent of our waste stream has to be recycled. So one of the challenges that we have, as we look to try to adjust those numbers, is if we were to cut back anything, say the drop center or, or not empty the, the bins as much and maybe not have as much recycling, that won't necessarily save us money. That just shifts money to another area and potentially can cause us a penalty if we drop below the thirty percent recycling. In addition to it being the right thing to do, from just a number standpoint, it's challenging anyway. Am I reading that correctly?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I will correct the number, and as I find them, I'll try to always do that. The increase from the New River Resource Authority is thirteen thousand four hundred dollars. It's two dollars a ton. I was thinking twenties, but it's not even twenties.
And that is a discussion I'd like to have at some point with them because one, when we had a presentation a few months ago, one of the reasons that we were not pulling some reserves out was to avoid an increase in cost. And so that's a little bit of a challenge where we left the reserves there and we're still experiencing some increase in cost.
That's the solid waste fund in a nutshell, and I should have said at the beginning as well. I'm going to send all, matter of fact, the last two presentations, several of you have asked, and I apologize, that was on the list all day and didn't get done, but I'm going to send you the present, the past two presentations and this one. So you'll have all of these numbers to start combing through when we get done this evening. Few minutes on the water and wastewater fund. Water and wastewater fund allocates resources for reliable, high-quality drinking water for five thousand four hundred and seventy-one water accounts with a treatment plant capacity of eight million gallons a day. The city also provides water to the Pulaski County Public Service Authority. City collects wastewater from five thousand three hundred and twenty-three accounts and utilizes the Pepper's Ferry Wastewater Treatment Authority for wastewater treatment. This is the current rate structure, and I showed this in a previous meeting with the city's water and sewer rates at, at, and this is based on four thousand gallons of usage, which the vast, that's, the vast majority of our citizens use four thousand or less. I've got the percentages on that and can certainly have that for you at a future discussion point, but near, a great number of our citizens are four thousand or under. That's fifty-two eighty a month. Then you can see the other communities around us, and the combined rate for those communities is from anywhere twenty-six point four percent higher to Dublin, which is actually almost double what we are in Radford. The proposal that I have for the water and sewer fund this evening is to increase the water rate for four thousand gallons from twenty dollars and thirty-two cents to twenty-four dollars and thirty-two cents. And then also the same four dollar increase on the wastewater side to thirty-six dollars and forty-eight cents, which takes the combined water and sewer rate for four thousand gallons from fifty-two eighty to sixty-eighty. It's an eight dollar increase for four thousand gallons of usage. Also showed those same rates for the, for the communities that are on the previous slide. And even with that increase of four dollars to water and four dollars to wastewater, the combined rate in Radford is still almost ten percent less than Blacksburg and still seventy-four percent less than Dublin.
And I want to point out, we are basing this on, these are our new rates, but this is the prior year. These numbers in these other communities will more than likely adjust some, and so that, that difference will probably even become greater once again.
Thank you for saying that, because the slide, yeah, the title's a little misleading. The proposed water and wastewater rates are for Radford. The other five communities on that sheet, those are their current rates. And so we don't know yet what they are proposing for fiscal year '26. But that's a, that's a very valid point. Again, through February, the water and wastewater fund is running about two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars to the positive, which is good. I'm sorry. I know guys make, guy, I'm going too fast. I'll try to slow down. For the water and wastewater fund, I broke these into two slides. One are the revenues and the other are the expenses. Top line personnel in fiscal year 2022, the water fund, water and wastewater had twenty-four, full-time, two part-time. That jumped to twenty-seven and one part-time in '23. This, I think, I haven't had a chance to ask, I think this was a, was it a reclassification from some other divisions to later? Don, does that ring a bell? It jumped to thirty-four in this current, or, excuse me, in the previous fiscal year. And then in this year's budget, it dropped back down to twenty-six. So I'm not sure who got moved around. This, this came out of the budget book, so I was assuming that. Could, well, it could have been. You think it's a typo? Okay, found it. I didn't make that mistake. It was in the budget book. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, so I think that twenty-four number may be twenty-four instead of thirty-four. But for fiscal '25, we have twenty-six, and then for fiscal '26 proposed, it's twenty-five. So, again, you can see, I, I wanted to include those on these slides because I've heard one or two folks, not here, I've heard one or two folks say, well, the city just keeps adding employees. Well, I hadn't found that yet, if they are.
We have had a hard time filling some, some roles, and so we've had some people coming and going. So that might give the appearance that we're just adding and adding, but I know that's been a challenge for a lot of our departments, trying to keep a stable employee base, you know, particularly with, with some of the areas that are a little tougher to find people.
Thank you. And, yeah, I, I said that to somebody this weekend. They said, well, the city's added a lot of new employees. I said, well, there may be new bodies in existing jobs, but they're not new people, new, yes. Water sales with, with the increase that we talked about on the previous slide would be right at three million dollars a year, which is a little under twelve percent over the current year estimate. Wastewater sales, three million four, which is about eleven percent over the current year estimate. And again, on both those, you will note that the fiscal year '25 estimate is less than the fiscal year '25 budget. And again, that, there are just, just some challenges, I think, with, with revenues there. Overall, total revenues of six million six hundred and ninety-four thousand. It's about a ten point four percent increase over the current year. So that would.
Craig, real quick on that.
Yes, sir.
Where are you based, or how are you, for the projection of a four hundred thousand dollar increase in wastewater sales?
It's, it's applying the, the accounts and the usage time. It's applying the accounts and the usage times at four dollar.
New rate?
Yes, sir.
Is that where you're getting that? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And I think the main reason we keep asking about that is to make sure we don't have overly optimistic estimations that it is based on a very real number. Now, that number could go higher. Like you said, you're budgeting conservatively, just factoring in the new dollar amount based on the usage for this year. I think that's the prudent way for us to move forward. So if we're surprised, we're surprised on the upside as opposed to on the downside. I did want to point out, I serve along with David Ridpath on the Pepper's Ferry Regional Wastewater Authority. And we've worked really hard to try to keep that authority solvent, but also hold down costs. And that's a tricky thing to do. The cost to treat, the cost to manage, some of the cost to deal with some of the damages we've had, that's all gone up. And the one piece with that is they were able to respond so well because they were fully staffed. I know our water department, our wastewater folks, they're able to do the things they do because they have personnel in the right places at the right times. And we're so appreciative of that. And that's something we have to keep in mind. We saw this in action during Hurricane Helene in a very, very big way, where some of our neighbors had much, much more challenge than we had.
And I want to make that point. Our estimate for Pepper's Ferry this year is about two million thirty-three thousand. The estimate for the fiscal twenty-five, fiscal twenty-six budget is two million, two hundred and fifty thousand, which is about a four point eight percent increase that's going to Pepper's Ferry for their service.
Right.
Right, on the expense side, again, the various departmental entities, payment and low taxes, water plant expenses, water treatment, water lines, water tanks and pumps, wastewater treatment, wastewater pumps, and then transfers that were in twenty-two and twenty-three, but not applicable in this past year, the current year and next year. Total expenses for the water and wastewater fund projected this year at six million, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty. For fiscal twenty-six, projecting five million, nine hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven, which is a decrease in expenses of three point four percent over the current year. So and that bottom line net number would be what would be added to the reserves if those numbers come true, seven hundred and seventy-six thousand. Another way to look at the budget, again, those are the wastewater cells, wastewater cells, then the various expenses in the water wastewater budget, six million, six hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. So that's water and wastewater. Last but not least, and the one that tends to present some challenges in terms of predictions, the electric fund. Electric fund provides resources for reliable electric service for seven thousand, five hundred and ninety accounts. As you well know, Radford is one of the fifteen municipal electric utilities in the state of Virginia. And the department includes administration, electric distribution, street lighting, substation maintenance, power generation and power purchase. This is where the electric fund stands revenue-wise through the end of February. And again, this shows revenues, expenses, and also with the time that this was run, there were three outstanding payments to AEP. That's included in that to show that even with those payments, the electric fund was running about a million four above revenues over expenses.
And that also budgets in a transfer to the general fund.
Yes, sir.
So it's still a million, three-six over that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. On the revenue side of the house, again, looking at personnel, full-time and part-time. Fiscal twenty-two, there were twenty-one full-time, one part-time. That dropped to twenty full-time and one part-time in twenty-three. Twenty full-time, one part-time in twenty-four. This current year, that has further dropped to nineteen full-time. And that's what's proposed for fiscal year twenty-six as well. Electric sales, the electric sales this year were budgeted for twenty-eight million, two sixty-one, two sixty-two. The estimate right now is twenty-eight million dollars. We're going to continue to take a look at that number to make sure, as we get the next cycle or two in, to make sure we're true to that. Based on that, the estimate for twenty-six would be twenty-eight million, three hundred thousand dollars. That does not currently include any adjustments to the rate for fiscal twenty-six. However, Tim and I had a conversation, was that today? Day's all blur, that we probably need to take another look at the wholesale power costs adjustments because we've had some further adjustment there. That could be in the range of one to two percent. I know that's one that everybody, it just, it just is what it is unfortunately. But we probably need to look at that and rerun that based on those numbers. But right now, we're looking at twenty-eight, three for the revenues. Total revenues of twenty-eight million, eight sixty-seven, five oh five, which is basically flat from the current year budget and about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars higher than current year actual estimate.
Tim, this is kind of a question for you. With some of the needs we have for the department and everything we've been talking about to make sure our system remains reliable, and it does apply to all of our utilities, but I know we've been delaying some things on electric. Do you feel comfortable, at least relatively comfortable, with where we are in terms of what we're talking about with these expenses and the revenue we're looking at bringing in?
I appreciate that. Thank you. And I'll piggyback on that as well. I know that as I met with department heads and talked about budgets and looking at staffing and whatnot, the city has a lot of long-term employees. And, you know, I think, Tim, correct me if I'm wrong. I think when Tim and I were talking that of his nineteen employees, there's probably eleven that could either retire or retire in the next three or four years. Yeah. So.
That to keep in mind, for sure.
Yes. On the expense side of the house, again, payment and low taxes, purchase power, operating costs, transfers, construction, capital plan and substation. For total expenses estimated this year of twenty-eight million, seven fifty-two. Estimate for next year, based on budget's proposal, is right at twenty-eight million, one hundred thousand. That does not assume any change in the transfer. It's still three point nine million. And I will tell you that, I think I've shared with a couple of you, I know as we move with cogeneration coming on at Radford University in the next year or so, and knowing that we're probably going to see, well, we will see a decrease in revenues from Radford, from the university. I would love to see the city start working that transfer down because you're going to need to retain more of the funds in the electric system. As I go through the general fund this week, that's what Calista and I are going to be doing all week. If there are any opportunities, we will certainly look at that. But as I've been foreshadowing all along, the challenge is going to be the general fund. And I'm concerned about how that's going to come together. We hopefully will have quite a discussion about that next Monday night. But I say all that to say that fiscal year twenty-six expenses in the electric fund, twenty-eight point one million, that's two point three percent less than projections for the current year of twenty-eight point seven million. So of the three funds, water and wastewater and electric, we're projecting decreases in expenses. One was a little over three, the other one's a little over two, as we stand right now.
I think one of the interesting numbers to look at is the purchase power price that we have had to pay since twenty-two. It's almost a seven million dollar increase. It's ultimately almost fifty percent higher than we had. And certainly our rates haven't gone up that high. I think, again, we're talking about this and saying we're trying to keep rates as low as possible, but keep this a solvent fund, keep it manageable. As you heard, four million dollars or so, almost four million dollars supports the general fund. And trying to make all of that work's a big challenge. But I think that's one of the hardest numbers to look at and understand where that margin went and how that's really affected us in a challenging way.
And then lastly, this is just a summary of the electric fund for fiscal year twenty-six. Budget balance is at twenty-eight million, eight sixty-seven, five oh five. So those are the three utility funds. I wanted to walk through those with you this evening. I wanted to share with you my thoughts on what we're looking at in terms of rate increases in solid waste and water and wastewater. Electric fund does not include anything right now related to the wholesale power cost adjustment. We will look at that and see if that needs to be worked in for fiscal twenty-six.
So basically, what we're seeing here is you're recommending, or you're projecting that this would work with about an eleven dollar increase on the average person, average customers.
That's.
Still, without looking at the electric, because the electric is such a complicated piece, that we're not looking to add anything to the Radford rate portion of that.
We're not looking to add.
But the wholesale power portion is that piece that we get, that we just have to pass along.
Yes, sir.
So that we don't eat into the cost of the system. But about eleven dollars per customer is what you've talked about.
That's correct. Three dollars on solid waste and about eight dollars a month for anyone who uses four thousand or less of water and wastewater. And I will get this all tidied up and summarized for you. What I wanted to do this evening is just walk you through that. And I, typically when I've done budget reviews, I do it all in one evening. But we've got our work cut out for us this week on the general fund, so we just weren't quite ready. I'm hopeful we'll be ready next Monday night. We're going to be ready, right? Whether we are or not, we're going to be ready Monday night to get general fund in front of you. But I can't, I can't thank the department heads enough for the input that they've given. They provided the initial input. Calista did all the initial reviews and passed it along to me. I spent a tremendous, I didn't bring all the stuff in here. I spent a tremendous amount of time over the weekend tying back to previous fiscal year audits to make sure there weren't any really wonky things going on that we would miss. You know, if you try to tick and tie on here, the numbers don't include, you know, on most of these expenses, they don't include non-operating revenues and expenses, and they don't include depreciation. I mentioned that earlier. So when you're tying back to financial statements, you have to remember those two things. But, you know, got to start somewhere moving these things forward. Nobody likes increases. But we've got to get those utility funds at least so that they're not continuing to decline and then start building them back up.
Well, and I think one of the things to keep in mind, too, is when we hire people for these areas, when we're competing against Dublin and Pulaski and Blacksburg and Christiansburg, we're competing against AEP, we can't necessarily set that rate. We have to pay what it takes to get someone here. So our expenses are somewhat fixed in being able to address them. And that's a big challenge for us. So when we're ten percent, twenty percent, a hundred percent below someone on a cost, that's a challenge for us with our system.
Well, and one, I appreciate you mentioning that, Mayor, because, you know, when we talk about solid waste, for example, in personnel, some of our neighboring localities pay significantly higher for truck drivers, for trash truck drivers. And I know we've lost one or two there, I mean, significantly higher because they're required to have a CDL. And so, you know, that's a concern that I have, that we'll talk about more next week, too, with some of the challenges that we have just dealing with personnel cost and benefits, is we don't want to be falling further behind. When you look at water and wastewater fund, those employees, Wade, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe every operator at the water treatment plant has their class one operator license? But pretty close. Well, and, you know, that's, that's just, that's like a CDL for a truck driver. When you move up to that level, then you start getting picked off. The neighbors, again, you know, we spend the money to train them and get them invested in Radford, and then another community offers them five or 10 grand more and they're gone.
Well, and I brought that up for a reason. I had some people saying, well, don't just charge more just because everybody else charges more. But I think it's a bigger question than that. Are we competitive with the revenue we can bring in, the salaries and the expenses we have to address with our neighbors? Because they all live right here in this area typically. And, you know, going to Dublin or going to Christiansburg is not that difficult for someone if they can see a big change in what they make.
Absolutely. And then, as Tim mentioned on the electric fund, you know, those nineteen employees that we have, if four or five of them retire, I can promise you finding four or five replacements is going to be.
Challenging.
Challenging and expensive.
Right. Well, I wanted to add my thanks to all of our department heads. We're so appreciative, not only for this work, but for the work you do all the time consistently. Folks talk about the utilities in Radford and how well-maintained they are, how when there's an issue, it's addressed immediately. And I think we value those services at such a high level and need to keep that in mind as we go through this process. And of course, thank you to all the staff for working on this because this is a tough problem. And it makes it even tougher sometimes when you get there and you realize, oh, there's not a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, a million here that could just easily go away. It's all essential stuff that we have to deal with. So thank you all so much.
No, thank you for that. And thanks to Calista, we were in and out all weekend trying to get things pulled together. And it'll probably be some of that again this coming weekend for the general fund, too. But.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments regarding utilities so far? I do think it'd be good, maybe in a couple of weeks, if we have time next week, but in a couple of weeks to come back to this, particularly with the electric part. If you can help us with the wholesale piece and whatever that projection looks like. I know that has been such a moving target, and it's so difficult because I keep getting these notifications, too. As Mayor, AEP puts in for another rate increase, you know, another rate increase with the state corporation.
Right.
Right, absolutely. Thank you.
So when we say, well, you know, when we readdress this in a couple of weeks, are these things that we can move sooner? I want, just want to reiterate, these are things we don't necessarily have to put off with the next budget.
What I'd like to suggest is next Monday night, we'll be talking about the general fund, which will be talking about the tax rate, real estate tax rate. And we have to advertise, we have to advertise all the rates and fees pretty quickly to get to the public hearing and whatnot. If the council decides next Monday night, when you advertise the utility rates, that you want to implement those sooner than July first, you can opt to do that.
Okay, thank you.
And I would say this, if what we've seen here that's being proposed doesn't meet the need, and I know there's a lot of numbers here that everybody needs time to process, we can adjust. I mean, I think certainly nobody wants to see rates go higher. But if we feel like we need an extra dollar or two dollars or whatever the case is, just like Craig said, we can either strengthen our reserves position or we could transfer to the general fund if we choose to do that. There's a whole host of things we can do. But I think we need to kind of have that discussion and pull that together as soon as we can so that then we can get those advertisements out there and let folks know what it's going to be.
And that was, thank you, Mayor. And that's why I prefaced some of the comments tonight. Tonight, I tried to paint the utility funds. Next Monday night, we'll paint the general fund. And then every meeting from then till you vote on the budget is an opportunity to debate, discuss. Hope we don't argue. We won't argue. Debate, discuss, whatever we need to do to settle it.
Although, we do have some deadlines for advertising the rates ahead of time. So we're getting pretty close on that in terms of.
Next week.
The day we need to make that decision. Expense-wise, we can have more debate and talk about where we want that to be. But in terms of rates, we're going to have to figure out what that high watermark is, advertise that, go through the public hearing process. that, go through the public hearing process, and all the pieces that that takes, it takes several weeks before we can get to whatever those new rates look like.
And after we present the general fund next Monday night, I hope we'll have an opportunity to talk about, are you comfortable with these recommendations? Do you want to advertise more? And I always say, I've said for years, you can always advertise higher. You can't, the problem, if you advertise lower and then you decide after the fact you want to go higher, you have to start the whole process over. So, you know, even if you don't think you would support whatever the number is, that's what I've told elected members before, put it out there for advertisement, knowing that you're, you're likely gonna come down, but you've gotta set it here so you have that room.
Yep. Okay. Any other questions regarding utilities or anything we've seen so far this evening? Okay. We need to go into a brief closed session before we get into our regular meeting, so I'm gonna ask Seth if he will take us into closed session. You all are welcome to wait right out in the hall. We won't be really long, and then we will invite you back in and begin our regular meeting fairly shortly after we finish the closed session. So Seth, if you want to take us into closed?
I'd like to make a motion to convene a closed meeting. Enter closed session under VA Code Section 2.2-3711A8 for consultation with legal counsel concerning three matters requiring legal advice, including a proposed settlement in the opioid litigation, the ready grant, and the school capital projects account.
We have a motion to go into closed session. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you all so much. Give us just a few minutes to talk, and then we will be back to see you.